Good evening, everybody. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council member. If you don't mind, can we start with the budget calendar? It's less to review. Would that be okay? Which is the first page on the packet I gave you? Can you hear me?
You can't hear.
Cannot.
Mona, do you want to come up here and stand and make your presentation?
I have a lot of materials. Can I try the other microphone?
It's not, it's not a micro, the microphones are only for online. No.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Or no?
So that's just for online. No, they're just for online.
Phones are just for online. We need to hear you speak. You can still speak in the microphone for those that are watching, but.
Hello, just make a follow up.
No, well, there, are there anybody, is there anybody watching? Any public?
Microphone sounds great. Thank you.
Okay, so 2024 budget calendar, you have a copy. You also receive a copy a week ago. We're already on 417, so some of the items we have on the calendar have been taken care of. So just to summarize the budget calendar, we're gonna have about seven study sessions of the 2024 budget. And the proposed budget will be on 918. Per the Home Rule Charter, we have to have a proposed budget by 930. Actually, seven days before 930, so 918 will give us plenty of time to to have that. And then besides that, we also have some deadlines required by the state. The mill levy, adoption of the mill levy, which is beginning of December. We also need to have certify annual mill levy by mid-December. And then, once the budget and the restated budget are approved, we need to file them with the state by end of January 2024.
So what we're looking forward from y'all is if any of these dates do not work for you as far as vacations and stuff like that, the sooner you can let us know, the better, so we can make some changes. Like the only ones we probably couldn't change is the 918 date.
Any comments or?
No, I'm looking at a calendar real quick. These aren't all on meeting dates. These are just states that have deadlines too, right?
Right.
Real quick, the isn't? Isn't the 18th a federal holiday? The Juneteenth?
918.
Oh.
So that would not be Juneteenth.
So I guess.
Do new.
I am curious about the 1016 date. You have something about amending the 2022 budget?
Oh, good catch, 2023.
Okay, thank you.
Will make the correction.
I was like, we're not going back to that budget.
Nope.
Oh, come on. Don't you want to go back to that one?
No, I know you want to go back to that year for any reason.
I'm with you on that. Thank you.
Any other comments, questions on that?
No, I don't have vacations planned that far out, but I know when I won't be here in November and doesn't appear to have.
So we have pretty much every month at least one session to review the budget. And these are placeholders, so if there is a need to cancel one, we definitely have another one the following month, so it's not like we're missing out a lot if need be.
What is the process for asking questions?
During budget. So about the budget, so we started the budget process. Usually we receive questions through Mike, or maybe they are addressed to me, but Mike will be also the one reviewing. You can either ask questions via email or during the study sessions or, you know. I mean, we're here to provide you all the information you need, so like, I don't know if you want to add.
Just any questions you have, copy me and Mona at the same time, and we'll answer them for you.
But you don't have to wait for a study session if you have a burning question by any means.
We're looking for, we're looking for your priorities too. If you have something that's not, you know, we're fixing to show you a CPP. If there's something that's not in there that's a priority to you, we need to know that sooner than later, so we can include that. And what we'll be going over, the CPP goes through 2027.
So the November 20th date, I think I'd already emailed you about this. That's the week of Thanksgiving, and I was looking to cancel that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we could either do it the week, the one before that, or
Right.
One after that.
So is December 4th too late?
Um, no, no.
As long as we get it done in December. We'd like to get it done in November if possible, but, you know, depending on all these meetings that we have, how comfortable you are with the budget in November, we could get it done on the 6th of November. Or if you're not comfortable and you want to cancel the 20th, then we could get it done on the 3rd.
The 4th.
Or the 4th.
Does anybody have a problem with the week of Thanksgiving not having a meeting?
So would you like me to move to beginning of December? What will be the day, the 5th?
We could be flexible with how the the sessions go between now and then, and
Okay.
we're, if you feel that we're coming along and understanding, then do it sooner. And if you think that we need to be hit upside the head a little bit more,
Okay.
do it in December.
Yeah, I mean, we're gonna have a proposed budget anyway by the end of September, so.
So are you okay if we add, add a meeting for 11/6/2023 to review the final version of the budget? And then adoption of the two budgets.
Yeah, I'll just change the 20th on this calendar to the 6th.
Yeah.
To the 6th.
Exactly.
Sounds good.
Yep.
The December 5th to the 4th? December 5th to the 4th?
Hello? Yep.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make those changes. So I have three changes so far, 11/20 to 11/6, December 5th to 12/4. And then to change instead of 2022, 2023, I'll make these changes and send you the updated budget calendar tomorrow.
Okay.
Morning. You're welcome. Thank you. Anything else?
You're gonna go through the?
CPP, next.
Just one second. Council member Kimpel, we, we're gonna have some changes to the calendar, but if you want to look through yours to see if there's any conflicts, can you email them to Mona and and Mike?
So I have it on the screen what the changes have been proposed. So in on 1016, I had 2022 budget. It will be changed to 2023. And then 11/20 will be changed to 11/6. And then 12/5 will be changed to 12/4. So I made the changes.
We, we don't have an election right now for 2023. No, we don't get impacted by out, we don't get impacted by county elections that don't have any ballots for Monument on it, right?
But they want to use our facility for elections in December? They might.
You're right. Last year they had, and we moved to the church.
And and typically what we do is find a different location to be able to have the meeting.
Yeah, we had a big red budget workshop stuff.
In the church and another one.
Well, we just, we just, we were gonna have the meeting anyway on November 6th. That wasn't going away. We just changed to not have a meeting on the 20th. So the 20th is the week of Thanksgiving, and we're just not gonna have a meeting that week. The 6th was still gonna happen. I, I do. I do, and I'm pretty sure that they know what to do if that happens.
Yes, that happens. If they want to use this room, we allow them to use this room, then we'll find another location to have the meeting.
Okay.
But you are required by charter to have one meeting a month, so we do have to have a meeting in November.
I'm not asking to cancel it.
Right.
Okay. Any other question or concern about the budget calendar? No? Okay. Well, thank you. Let's move on to the CPP.
So everybody understand what CPP means? Any questions about that?
So the spell out is Capital Projects Program. I gave copies, hard copies, in case you would like to take notes. So we provided you all the Capital Projects Program, starting with 2023 up to 2027. And if you go to slide 2, you can see in total by year and by department, how many, in terms of dollar amounts, how many projects we're gonna have. So parks will have the most in 2027, followed by streets and planning. So these are the big departments, or the departments will have the biggest projects. So in total so far, for the five years, we're gonna have 134 million. And then the next slide will just provide you a breakdown by level of priority. So high level, according to our staff members, we have about 93.6 million, and we will go year by year to provide you kind of the highlights of the projects, but this is more like a summary. And then we have medium priority level, about 15.2, which is 11% of the, of the total projects. And then low level of priority, about 24 million, which is about 18% of all the projects. Any questions so far? Okay, so then if you like to see the details by year, in 2023, you have on your screen Planning, Water, and PD. And then for each of the department for planning, we're gonna spend about 500K for Jackson Creek Parkway, and this will be probably still mostly design. For water, we have another 500K for publics, a public work facility. And for PD, we have about 140,000 to replace some of their cars. Moving on to slide 8. For parks, the biggest project will be the Monument Lake Pier. So our portion is gonna be 65,000, but the total cost of the project will be 170K, 1,000. And then you see some smaller projects for parks, but, you know, the community is always asking for what improvements we make. So even if it's 5K or 25,000, we provided you in case you're being asked. And then, as you know, the town council, we have in 2023 budget to replace the sound system in this room. Because the town council.
Facilities is part of parks. Facilities is part of parks.
The sound system.
Above facilities?
Right, parks is over facilities. Well, I know they're separate budgets, but I'm saying they manage facilities. Oh, that's not what you're asking?
What I'm asking is if they're gonna.
The sound. Yes, so the sound system, because it's referring to this room, which is the town council room, we put this in the budget in the town council department.
It's not in parks budget, it's in town council's budget.
I get it. What I'm asking, what I was asking, Mona gets it. I'm saying, if you're gonna, if you're gonna break it out, why call it town council? Why not call it, this is really.
Facility.
Why don't you leave a facilities budget regardless of who was pushed? I'm not looking at organizational structure. I'm just looking at functionality.
Yeah.
That's all.
Oh.
That was just a question.
No, and you're right, maybe it should have been facilities.
No, because you have the carpet and paint at Town Hall.
Yes.
Under facilities.
Yes.
All encompassing.
Right.
The audio video is in one particular room, but it's,
Yeah.
I mean, you're going into walls, you're going into wiring closets, it's, it's a facilities thing.
Yes, you're right. It maybe should have been presented under facility, but in the 2023 budget, it's under town council. So in the CPP, they try to be consistent with how it was.
Consistent?
So can I just stop right there and just bring up a note? As I was going through this over the weekend, I had started watching some videos of past meetings, because you had the AV stuff in here. And recent, there was quite a bit of conversation going on at the, the podium with guest speakers speaking to people in the audience. And we can certainly change our processes on getting people to come forward, because if you're sitting there watching those videos, you can't hear them.
Yeah.
So this is my way of asking, when are we gonna get to this? So what, when is the AV stuff going to be gone out for bid? Is it, is it gonna happen this year?
Oh, yeah, definitely gonna happen this year. I can't give you a time right now, but it's definitely gonna happen this year.
When Drew is gonna come back in the office, I will ask him to provide more detailed information about this specific project. But this is scheduled to happen this year.
Yep.
Okay. Cool. Thank you.
Right.
Another question, and forgive my naivety on this, but when you said PD, Police Department?
Yes.
140K replace worn vehicles. Was the increase in the taxes collecting money that was going for the police department is not covering that automatically? Or is, or are we adding money, additional funds?
So this is not, I'm so sorry for interrupting you. This is not from general fund. When you see the water, it's coming from the water fund, the PD discovers everything. It's not, covers the project for the PD. But this money is gonna come from two sources, from 2F. And the two sources that are feeding 2F, the revenue is coming from the general fund, 2.6 million transfer to PD. And 1.7 or 1.6 was in 2022 and 1.7 in 2023 from sales tax.
But that's what makes it confusing, because it, it appears.
That it's only one.
It appears that, given those things, this is in addition to that.
Yeah. When the two.
That's kind of the way I read it too.
2F was specifically passed to cover.
And and that takes a little bit of explanation, because y'all haven't been on the board when all that was discussed previously. So previous councils have said that Police Department cannot survive on just 2F. Okay, so we were giving 2.6 million dollars to the Police Department prior to 2F. And so we continued that 2.6 of application of funds from the general fund to the Police Department. So they get 2.6 million today from the general fund on top of the 2F sales tax proportion. So they get almost 4.2 million dollars. This 140,000 dollars is included in that total 4.2 million dollars.
So 2F was active to to the budget?
Correct.
It was intended.
Exactly.
That's why I, and the, and council. I thought this, that was in addition.
No, that's, that's part of the 4.2 million. That's part of the 4.2 million dollars.
Well, I think. So why is it called that?
It's just the cost of the project.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For 2023, we wanted to provide.
Should there be like a little asterisks underneath that saying?
Well, this is just a high-level overview of these pages. She gets into more detail. When you get, when you see the actual full budget, it's gonna be detailed as to where all this is gonna come from.
Yeah, if you look at the 2023 budget, it will detail exactly what this has been. We're not asking for more money in 2023. We're just showing you some of the projects from 2023 to 2027. The one in 2023 have already been approved. We're not asking for anything extra.
No.
Do what?
It was.
Think you're on that council.
In November of last year.
Yep.
Wait, wait till, wait till they come back and ask for approval to spend the money we already approved in the budget. That's when it really gets confusing. So we're gonna sit here and go through the.
Still has to explain to me what, why we have to do that, but.
Well, we could, we can change it. Ability to spend more than 25,000 dollars, but that's
Not happening.
Probably not a good idea.
Yeah.
So we come back and ask.
Take a look at that, because if we, if we approve the budget and the budget is line item, then it's.
Right, but it's, it goes over 25,000, then we.
If it goes over, but if we budgeted 400, 475,000 for AV, and he spends 74,599.
But it's over 25,000. That's, that's where it's.
So you have somebody else sign it, sign the, sign the check. I mean, that's the thing.
But.
You have levels of authority. You should have.
I totally understand, but once this council approves the budget, and if the budget includes 75,000 for AV,
We don't.
then to me, he's cleared hot to spend up to 75,000 for AV. He should be good to go. The only thing he should come back to, to us with is, remember that 75,000 you budgeted and you approved me to spend? I spent 73,000. Cool. All right. Have fun.
But he can spend the 75. He just, if the check is over 25, which makes the project, every time it, it's, it's, if, he's got authority to 25,000, so that's why it's gotta come back.
But it.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But that's just, that's just how the process is.
It just doesn't make sense.
You got a bunch of corporate people sitting here going, it doesn't.
I'm not arguing the, the sense being made or not. I, I, I agree. There would be a lot less resolutions coming to us.
Less work on them.
Right.
Because they, they have to sit down and write a resolution for a budget item that we've already approved and talked about. I mean, he's shady, obviously. But I, it, it just, I, I think we can streamline and and improve the process and, and by, by its very nature, reduce the amount of unnecessary workload that these guys have to do on a, on a weekly basis. Just my thoughts.
Well, we can come back around to that.
Okay.
Yeah. I have no problem with us investigating that. Okay, sorry, Mona.
Not a problem. And by the way, we have a purchase policy. I'm not sure if you receive copies. I can send a copy to all of you, where you can see just like you mentioned, the levels of approvals and, you know. Would you like to receive a copy? Okay, I will send it tomorrow to all of you. So moving on to facilities, 85,000, you're familiar with the carpet and paint. The paint has been done, was about 15,000, and the carpet is to be done. Fleet, they're gonna invest $10,000 into a laptop. And that's in a nutshell, 2023, which was included in the budget. Now, moving on to 2024, this is something that was not in the budget, but will be in the budget when we discuss, when we have the study sessions. So.
And this is where we need help from you. If you see things on here that are not included that you want done next year during our budget process, you need to bring those up.
Yep. So planning, the largest project of 2024 will be the Jase, JC, Jackson Creek Parkway, about 8 million to spend on that, and then follow.
So there, I've already asked this question, so everybody knows. The entire, all the line items about Jackson Creek Parkway are the cumulative total for all parties of what the road will cost to build out. Not necessarily the town's portion.
Okay.
So this is just telling us how much it's gonna cost each year from 105 to Higbee.
Right.
Yep. Because the estimated cost of the project as of now is about 23 million.
And that could go down based on cost of, cost of materials, because we bid this or we didn't bid it, but we designed it based on the fact that we were at the highest cost of materials.
So given that this is 2024 that we're in now, and you've got water components up next.
Yes.
Are any of these projects part of the extension from the, the 20 million dollar project money? Or have, or is that expired this year?
So we just met with our Piper Sandler on that same issue, and we are trying to expend 85% of the 20 million dollars in 2023.
Which is about 18.5.
15% are gonna be allowed in 2024.
2024, yes. The requirement by the IRS is to expend 85% of the dollars by 2023.
Okay.
By November 2023.
Correct.
And our plan is to do that. If we can't do that because of weather or whatever, then we're gonna apply for an extension. And Piper Sandler is gonna be helping us with that.
We already spent 12 million out of the 18.5 required to meet the 85%. So 6 million will be between now and November, like Mr. Foreman said. If not, we're gonna take the necessary steps.
We got a lot of good favors on our side. COVID was a huge issue for us being able to design, plan, and spend money. And then also lack of materials, not being able to get materials, supply chain has been a huge issue. So those both play in our favor to be able to apply for an extension.
There's one thing that's definitely missing across the spectrum here of the four years or five years, four years. There's nothing in here about NDS or the loop. And that's gonna cost money. I don't, I don't think we can go another four years without making a decision and starting to work. It's already been three that, since I've been on the board, and it's been a little longer than that. Well, when you got here. So why are we not accounting for some dollar amount towards water for one of these projects?
Currently, we received the grant from El Paso County for 4 million dollars, and we've had to put in 250,000 dollars into that this year. So we put that money in as of yesterday, that was, or as of Friday, that was in there. And so we believe that that's the only investment we're gonna have to make in the next couple of years, because it'll take us probably the next two to Because it'll take us probably the next two to three years to design and get acquisition or right away and everything like that. We believe that four million dollars is gonna cover that. If not, we're gonna come back to you and say, this is, but you're gonna have to make a decision like you're saying, within the next couple of years on which route we're gonna be able to go.
I'd like to make it the next, I mean, we've been saying that for the last couple of years. I want us to figure out as a council which project we're gonna go with and then in under six months.
And, and even if the decision is, we're gonna, we're gonna go with the loop, but we're gonna hedge our bets with the N D S or. But yeah, I, I agree with you. I think we, we need to sit down as a council and actually, no kidding, in public session, discuss it as a council and, and get. Citizen inputs on what, what's a, what's a way forward? We've gotten all the, all the data, all the details, all the information. I think now it's on us to, to kind of.
To weigh the pros and cons.
Wait, wait, in public session, obviously.
Well, it could be informal. Doesn't have to be a, a formal meeting where.
Yeah.
We don't have to make decisions. If we're gonna be engaging with citizens, it can just be a conversation.
Okay.
And we can show them.
Yeah, like a, some sort of work session where the.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and then followed by a, a, a decision. Do we have to, we have to do like.
We have to pass an ordinance probably.
Ordinance or a resolution.
It's gonna be.
You're gonna have, yeah, you're gonna have to take action in public and direct me on which direction you wanna go.
Well, that's why I was asking why I didn't see either or, like, you know, future water projects, twenty million dollars.
Can, let's.
Whatever it is.
Yeah, let, let's do this for twenty twenty-four. Can we put a line item that says renewable water infrastructure project? I mean, it, both of them are renewable water, quote unquote. Well, not quotes, they're, they're both renewable water infrastructure. Let's just put a line item that says in twenty twenty-four, we're gonna spend X on, on some infrastructure.
Well, you're, it's gonna be part of the planning dollars, right? Those are gonna take a couple of years to plan. But if, if we just keep pushing it off and don't mark it down, we're gonna forget.
Okay, so do you wanna put, say, say ten million dollars every year between now and twenty, twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-seven?
Do you think ten million can be done?
You're gonna have to sell bonds. You're gonna have to sell bonds.
Yeah, we'll have to discuss that.
Yeah.
That'll be part of the.
It's a large discussion to be able to have. If you want to put numbers in there and put any number you want in there, but it's gonna have to be a discussion that you have to, how much money do you wanna sell between now and twenty twenty-seven? And so we weren't prepared to put any numbers in there, yeah.
I, I think ten million.
People look at it though, uh huh.
Yeah, I, I think ten million is, is a. Is a liquid jello number. I think that, that works for now. And then if it's less, great. If it's more, you know, you're sucking wind through clenched teeth, but.
Liquid jello and sucking wind.
I think ten million, I, I think.
Ten million per year or ten mil- yeah, ten million in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay.
And hopefully it's less.
Yep. We'll do that.
Yeah, that too.
Okay, sorry for derailing you again, but.
No problem.
There was no, no, no water project in there and I figured it would be a big line item.
I mean, this is the reason we have this study session. To give you the information you need to make informed decisions.
Oh, and Woodmore is spelled M double O R.
Yes, I will make the change, thank you. But good catch.
So Mona, I gotta, just a quick, before you get going, I have a quick question on revenue. Because the, the, the whole property tax collection system is changing. Well, not collection, but how the values are assessed. So getting rid of the Gallagher amendment didn't raise the mill levy, but changed how that property is assessed. And they're expecting big increases in property tax. Do you have, I mean, do you have that kind of on your projection, at least in the back of your mind on how that's gonna affect us?
So I looked at twenty twenty-two to see how much we collected because we're starting the twenty twenty-four budget so early in the process. So last year we collected at the end of the year, one point two million. And I, I hear you, you know, if it's changing and it's gonna go up, the mill levy didn't go up, as you remember. I believe you were the only one who was part of the twenty twenty-three budget. So the mill levy stayed the same for twenty twenty-three, but I don't have an indication exactly how this is gonna change, how much more we should project. In terms of sales tax, we're probably gonna go, and I have to discuss with Mr. Foreman, probably gonna go with around eight percent increase. But property taxes, other than knowing how much we receive in twenty twenty-two, I don't know exactly how much we should project.
And a good time to let every one of you know, I think some of you probably paid attention when we debrewed. And so what that has an effect on is taper doesn't really affect us for the next nine years. And so what it does is when we debrewed, anything over our taper limits goes towards road construction. And so we can use it for road construction in the future. Yes, it does.
So, so this is how I understand it and, and I don't know, because it probably hasn't been calculated yet.
No, not yet.
It's somewhere between thirty to fifty percent increase on, on property taxes. Just because of how they changed the assessed value, because the Gallagher amendment held down the assessed value. And now that's been taken out. And it's also, this year's calculated on the peak of the real estate values, so. It seems like at least a thirty percent increase, but.
And we also have new development rights across Jackson Creek Parkway, which should be done by the end of twenty twenty-three. So, you know, and then they're selling more Willow Springs houses. So we should see a collection from those new developments also.
Thank you.
I'm gonna look into it and I will, I will research and I will send all of you more information on this.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So the big projects for water are, again, the public works, which you've seen a similar amount in twenty twenty-three, five hundred K. Also, the emergency interconnect, Triview, Monument Triview and Woodmore, another five hundred thousand. And then a new generator, generator, another a hundred twenty. And then a pipe replacement of seventy-five thousand. These are the largest projects for water before we make changes regarding the loop.
One thing I'll remind you also is that on twelve fifteen to twenty twenty-three, you have the ability to certify the annual mill levy. And so you can review what our mill levy is at that time. We can show you based on growth what our projections are for revenue at that time. And so you could change the mill levy, you could lower it. We've done that in the past based on if we think our revenue is gonna be more than what you want our reserves to be, then you have the opportunity to review that.
We will receive an assessment from county assessor on end of August. So that will give us an indication. But the adoption of mill levy, it's gonna be on the four, just because we don't have numbers until the end of November, like final numbers on assessed property value.
Thanks. Okay, I don't, we've got two other workshops to go through. I, I don't wanna have to have you rush through this. Because we probably still are gonna have more questions. How, what about the other two workshops? Are those something that we could move to another?
I'd rather, I'd rather have Madeline do hers. Bob was gonna do his online. We have a handout that we could give you from his and he could do his next time if you wanted to.
Okay, if you, can we give Madeline some time and then we continue?
And we can continue.
Cause our next, next week too. Yeah, we have another workshop next week.
Right.
Right? Are you okay with that?
Of course.
This isn't anything.
I'm not trying to pull the mic out from you.
Not the problem.
This isn't anything we wanna rush through. I wanna give you plenty of time.
Okay. And in the meantime, everybody can come up with questions and say, like, Mona.
Two weeks. Two weeks.
Sorry, two weeks.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm just trying to get under your skin.
Good job, Mona.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mona. Okay, next up is Madeline with the Monument Lake Pier.
This should actually be relatively quick. This is a project that we anticipate will happen in the next month. So last year, we applied for a grant from Colorado Parks and Wildlife for a fishing pier that will go at Monument Lake. And they awarded us up to a hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars to cover this project. We'll be responsible for twenty-five percent of the cost, which we anticipate should be around sixty-five thousand once the project is complete. Right now, we currently have about seven hundred and ninety feet of shoreline accessible at Monument Lake. It's thirty-one acres, but a lot of the shoreline isn't accessible there. And what we see, starting about this time of year, is a lot of crowding, a lot of conflict between watercraft users and anglers at the lake. So we hope that this will solve the, some of the problems by creating more access for anglers at the lake. This blue line to the north of the lake is where the approximate location will be. It will look similar to our current fishing dock. This right now is at the south end of the lake. But instead of kind of stopping mid lake, it will go all the way across to the other beach. And someday we hope to make improvements on the other side of the beach there too, so that there is more accessibility for anglers on that end as well. So this is kind of the existing shorelines, just so you can kind of see, this is where anglers currently have access to anglers and paddleboard launchers and kayakers and things like that. And then why did that go all the way back? This is what, how far across it will, the fishing pier will be. And there'll be little tees off of it so that people can still walk all the way through, but then people can also kind of go off to the side. We think it'll increase about forty percent kind of shore footage from where people will have access to fish. And then this is a, a heat map of kind of the depths. And so what this will allow anglers to do is have more access to the deeper parts of the lake too, which has different species of fish there as well. So we think this will provide a little bit better fishing experience for people at Monument Lake, as well as relieving some of the congestion that we currently have on the shore. And that is kind of the project in a nutshell. If anyone has any questions about it, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
One of the reasons we brought this to you was we were getting a few concerns about closing off some of the area to some existing homes, I guess, that have access to paddleboarding. And so this will close off their access to paddleboarding. They'll actually have to come into the lake area and present their, or, uh, show their paddleboard into the lake on the south side of the. South side of the, uh, new dock.
Yeah, because they won't, you won't be able to cross that pier with your paddleboard. You could take it out of the water up here at the north end and bring it around. Or you could paddle up here and bring it out to the lake there as well. So it's, it's a minor inconvenience for about six homes.
Six homes.
So those six homes currently have created their own access to the lake?
Well, that, their houses are right there on the lake and so they can just walk out their backyard and, and, and get onto the lake.
They don't have a fence between them and lake, right?
No, there's not.
Not like the other houses.
So actually, some of them do have, well, the, the fences were all taken down with the Palmer Lake sanitation project and they'll be rebuilding those.
Right.
This is the space that makes the most sense. It's also kind of the shortest area as well. Cause the, it's, you know, we'd have to add more pier material in order to make it longer.
And this was the design we submitted for the.
For the grant, yeah.
Application that we won.
Cause we had to, we had to work with Colorado Parks and Wildlife to ensure that we're not disrupting habitat as well. So this is the least disruptive to the lake habitat too.
So the existing pier stays there too?
Yes, the one on the south side, the dock.
What about extending the existing pier?
That's all, that would be a really long extension and I don't know that.
No, 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 just.
Oh, extending it out? We extend, we already have extended it once. Sure. Unfortunately for this particular project, this has already been approved and so we wouldn't be able to make any changes and keep our grant.
Unless I would imagine that the wind would really probably mess up a extension on that existing pier.
It would, you would feel more wind on them.
The purpose for this is to give you access to the other side of the lake also.
Who's, there's a house there, is there not?
Yes, but we, the, the shoreline right here is part of town property. But there is a, there, there, there is a house.
So is there a potential that anybody who goes across is gonna gain access to somebody's backyard?
It would be trespassing.
Yeah.
And, and I believe that house's property is fenced.
Okay, so it's fenced.
We, we may have to put some signs of.
Yeah.
Hey, this is the extent of monument property, now you're in private property.
And I, I believe there's a, there's already a fence there too, so.
Well, we'd definitely put up signage over there.
Okay.
One of those letting you know.
So what's, when's the start date?
So we just received word that it should be delivered within the next few weeks. And then we're still waiting for Colorado Parks and Wildlife to get back with us on when we can officially start the project. So hopefully we'll hear back in the next couple of weeks on our start date. We anticipate it'll probably take three to four days to actually complete the installation. So I anticipate by the end of, the mid to end of May, this project will be complete.
Okay, and Palmer Lake is still doing their, their project or have they completed their new line?
They've completed the new line. They're doing some cleanup work at the lake still though.
Okay, so the lake will be open for the summer.
The lake is already open.
It's already open.
We will probably have to shut the road to the lake down in order to, to move this project in there for a couple of days. But people will still be able to park up at the top and then walk down to the lake.
Okay.
Yeah, we can do a ribbon cutting. Once we have some firmer dates in place.
Have the mayor and the council out there to cut a ribbon.
Where you could cast your fishing lines? I don't know, we could think of something creative.
Walk across the bridge.
This is a floating dock, right?
Right.
Someone's gonna get bounced off, I'm gonna just see it.
There are rails.
I've seen people stand on the rails.
Hopefully not.
Okay, we're gonna take a recess then.
Well, we have them up on the lake rules going into the lake.
Rules everywhere along the lake in a couple of places.
The, the lake.
We'll consult with our attorney with Sersa to ensure that we comply.
Thank you, Madeline. All right, we're gonna take a twelve minute recess.
Do you want us to hand out Bob's?
Sure.
Thank you. Each one of you have an email.
He sent that email already?
No, he's not. I don't have enough time.
Oh yeah, I see the handout.